Welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the city council. And before we get started, Brett is out, so Sidney will lead us into pledge.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the flag for which it stands, on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up on the agenda, we have community notes, so if there's anybody here who has anything they would like to speak about that is not on the agenda, now would be the time. And if anybody would like to do that, you can certainly come up to the podium and let us know where you are.
Mr. Uh, relates to a little bit of what we're probably gonna talk about later, but my name is Scott Workman. I just want to say thanks for the plowing. It's awesome. The plowing of the sidewalks is great. I actually got a chance to walk tonight. Yeah, he's doing a fantastic job.
Hey.
Yeah, way at work. It's been a rough week, right?
Been a rough one.
But thank you very much. I think it's important to acknowledge that.
Good evening. I'm also not loving the snow, but I am loving the plowing as well. It's been great being able to get around. It's not great shuttling the driveway, however. I haven't had a chance to yet, a council meeting with the new council that's here, so I just want to say thank you to everyone that is on this council serving the city, as well as our new mayor. Congratulations. Good to see you all here. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Heather Merrill. And I live in the South End, and I just wanted everyone to know that we're having our winter carnival. And it's one to four on-
Winter Fest.
Winter Fest, sorry. Winter Fest on February 14th, and from one to four. It's a lot of collaboratives together, but there's gonna be snow shoeing, and skiing, and sliding, and we're gonna have soup and cider.
Is there a main meeting place for this?
It's at Green Street Park.
Green Street Park.
That's the best sliding hill in Waterville, I think.
February 14th.
So it might be a challenge on that one. It was fun. I actually ended up going to the Quarry Road Winter Carnival. Talk about what used to be a slope that I skied down when I was in high school. Was a great sliding slope, even more accentuated, but just want to say that I got a chance to really get to meet a number of families from the South End. As we headed over to the Quarry Road, close, there were well over 900 people who were at the Quarry Road, participating in all kinds of events. And I heard nothing but kudos. So, kudos to Parks and Rec and to all of the volunteers that make that happen. It was outstanding. And I also want to give a kudo to, I don't know how you have the bus system, but through the school departments, but the driver and the kids, they identified one another and the comfort load for them and their families. As we were taking people to the Quarry Road and bringing families back. One heck of an event. So, these people are doing good work.
Sidney.
I just want to bring up that I had the pleasure of, at the invitation of Linda Woods, with Sustain Mid-Maine Coalition, attending the annual meeting last Saturday. And with Efficiency Maine, there was a rep there, and there was a lot of things that were discussed that are beneficial to not only residents, but also to the small businesses. And I definitely wanted to bring up the small business end of it, where some of the literature that Linda has provided in email, you know, Efficiency Maine is now piloting a new energy efficiency program exclusively for small business in the area. It helps building owners quickly replace inefficient lighting, achieving significant reductions in electricity consumption and monthly energy bills. Efficiency Maine offers incentives that cover 75% or more of project cost, which results in a payback of less than one year. Participants in other towns are averaging $100 per month in savings. So, the Efficiency Maine number is 1-866-376-2463. It's scheduled free, no obligation lighting assessment, and this is really available to Waterville small businesses for just a limited time. So, I wanted to point that out, that this is just another way that small businesses can consolidate and help with their expenses, and it's definitely a shot in the arm for small businesses, and I wanted to bring that up. And applaud Linda Woods and her entire team. It was a pleasure being in on that meeting. There was just so many facets, and I plan on attending more of those meetings because I think they do a tremendous amount of work in the region in all different facets. And we had the pleasure of listening to Jim Woods, who's here tonight, and I'm looking forward to that.
Just had some. LeBron Carter from Word Four. There's a great program with Home Energy Answers. They'll come to your house and they'll work with, is it Energy Maine, I believe it was? And they'll come check, see where all the leaks in your home are, and where you're losing the cool air, and they work with that program. They're really great. So, if someone wants to, give them a call to their early break records.
Their website?
Homemenergyanswers.net. And I did some.
Anybody else for community note?
I just wanted to piggyback what Scott said, and thank all the people in Public Works, people who are out plowing, when we were sent home and businesses closed, and schools closed, they were out on the roads. I had a chance to talk to the guy who came down my street, which is a small dead-end street, so it's one of the last ones. And I thanked him, and he said that between the first storm on Tuesday and Wednesday last week, he had only about three hours of sleep. So, these men and women went home, ate, took a shower, slept for a couple of hours, and even got back on the roads to keep our roads safe. So, I'm really thankful to them, and I'm thankful to the school districts who closed, the buses off, and the kids home safe. And I just, I think the amount of snow we had, it could have been a lot worse, and I think the city did a really good job keeping us safe.
Thank you.
Pass that on to Heather Merrill, please.
Right. Anybody else for a community note? All right, we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to pass the consent agenda?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor? All opposed? Passed. Onto unfinished business. To start, we have Resolution 1752014.
A resolution providing for a poverty abatement number five, 2014. Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Waterville, acting as municipal officers as follows: That the City Council approves tax abatement request number 052014 for unpaid taxes, interest, and lien charges for the tax year 2012, 2013, in the amount of $1,331.52.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Discussion?
It's been paid and settled, so I guess I would ask you to change your motion to move to postpone indefinitely.
Move to postpone indefinitely.
Second.
All in favor?
Good work.
All right, next, Resolution 212015.
A resolution providing for revision of position description. Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Waterville, acting as municipal officers as follows: That the current job description for the city planner position be changed to create an assistant code enforcement officer slash city planner position, and that the city manager be authorized to begin advertising for this position as soon as possible. The proposed job description for this position is attached.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Ann Beveridge and I sat down this afternoon and talked about this idea of a position change. And I'm happy to report to you tonight that I think we've reached agreement, and I can let her speak to that, too. But the agreement going forward would be that it would be a part-time position, but that the title of city planner would stay with Ann, as it has for the last 26 years, and that the position that we would use with the additional hours available would be strictly a code enforcement position. So, if the council's willing, I'd ask you to change the resolution to make it clear that the job description is assistant code enforcement officer and strike city planner. And again, the agreement going forward would be that it is a part-time position, it would be under contract, as it has been all this time, an annual contract. And I don't think I'm forgetting any important details, if I am, these are basically where we ended up. From all along, I've been trying, just doing what I can to make as efficient use of our human resources as possible. Given our financial situation, I am concerned about going into the budget with state revenue sharing still being so uncertain, knowing that we've spent a lot of our surplus down. So, again, that was my intent all along, was try to create efficiencies, especially in one department where we know we're understate.
So, can I amend the motion? To amend, I don't know how, I guess amend that it would be a part-time code enforcement officer, that would be?
It would be a full-time.
It would be a full-time code enforcement-
Full-time code enforcement officer.
Assistant code enforcement officer, correct?
Right.
And then Ann Beveridge would retain the city planner job on a yearly contract-
Correct.
-part-time basis.
Correct. So, Mike, you're not contemplating that this new person would do any city planning, or? Well, certainly, in those hours where Ann isn't here- Yeah. Maybe that new person could help fill in. Yep, and learn from her over the next- Sure. -few years, right? But not as someone that's being brought in specifically to replace her. No, being brought in really specifically to help Garth.
Which is really where we need the help.
Which is where we need the help. Correct.
Mind if I ask a question?
Sure.
There are a lot of, at least in some of the articles that I've read, there's a lot of concern that it's gonna be costly, legal-wise, to have a code enforcement officer actually make some of these changes happen. How does the city plan to address that legal piece? This was an article I read in the local paper.
To make what changes happen?
Whenever you enforce the codes, you have to go through a legal process. And so, there was an article in the paper, maybe Amy wrote it? No? Sorry.
I don't think so.
Okay. But, you know, how's the city want to address that?
Oh, you may have been reading about the Augusta area code enforcement effort, and what, you're right, the point is very, very important, as we, well-
As you enforce the ordinances you have.
-enforce the ordinances you have, or add new ones, the issue of doing the enforcement becomes more and more extensive. And eventually, if you don't get cooperation from landmark authorities-
Or complete a legal piece, I suppose.
Then we've got to turn for our legal help, and that costs money.
Yeah. So, how's the city want to address that? Just out of curiosity.
Well, our approach always, always has been to do whatever we can, repeatedly, for voluntary cooperation. So, we don't go, Bill Lee, the city solicitor, unless it's at the point of a few letters, a few phone calls, and no response.
Sorry, I guess that was Augusta.
No, that's a good question. Read through the paper, and there's been talk about the idea of a new ordinance, or an additional ordinance on abandoned buildings, and my real worry is that enforcement piece, and being able to follow.
But, reality is, one of the major problems that we could have, if we're trying to get people to want to stay in Waterville, have businesses in Waterville, and live in Waterville, is a lack of code enforcement. Because if we just let properties kind of decay and do whatever they may-
Absolutely agree.
-over time, you know, I think it's something that, from what I've heard, just talking to residents everywhere, that I think people of Waterville will consider that investment certainly worth putting money into, and it could be something that we get some of that money back, depending on fines and fees.
Yeah. I agree, that's something I can believe. Yeah, I just think that it's important to understand that it's got risks, and it has to be followed through.
Certainly. Is there any other discussion on the revision of the position description?
I have a question. Only because my taxes are paying for this, this is why I'm asking this. This was, and this has nothing to do with anyone else, Heather Merrill, and I live at Nine Autumn Street. And I wanted to know if this year, her hours are 20 hours, and there's, and the position change has come before council, does that mean next year, when the contract comes, that her position can just be eliminated? Because then it doesn't have to come before council.
No. I think it would have to come before council, just like it had to come this time, correct?
No, because it's not a position change. It's just a regular-
But we wouldn't have a city planner.
Okay.
That would be the question.
I think the, I could be wrong, but the fact that she's the city planner and would keep that title-
That would be the question, at that point in time, whenever it is, do you want to no longer have the position of city planner? Right. So, I think it would come back to the council. Yeah. And the way this is proposed, with our planner at half-time, and an assistant code enforcement officer, I believe that in next year's budget, we can do it, those two positions as they are, less than what we're currently paying today. That's what I'm hoping. It's about $11,000 less. That is, with a low number for an assistant code enforcement officer. I know you have concern about that number.
Probably more achievable now that the focus is just in assistant.
In the code enforcement, and not a bigger job description. $11,000, $11,000 less than what we had paid last year. Yes. Actually, what we budgeted for this year. Okay. Yeah, for this 14, 15 year. Yeah.
So, just to clarify, the amendment on the floor is just to strike out the language "city planner" in this resolution. Is that correct, Council Dushay?
Yes.
The job description. Is the job description part of the resolution?
Right. The job description with, for the new position would be, would be new for-
Not just the title, but the job description.
Yeah, absolutely.
The new position would be an assistant code enforcement officer, and not code enforcement slash city planner.
Correct. Yeah. I'm gonna have to revise the job description as some of you have seen.
The guess language should read that it's a new job being created, a new job description being created.
Well, that goes without saying with creating the position, but anyway, yes. I think it's understood that if they voted to create a position, that a job description will be prepared, and it'll say assistant code enforcement officer.
Is the new job 40 hours? It's being created?
I believe it is. Mike, new job, 40 is 40 hours, correct?
Yes. Yes.
So, any other discussion?
I have one more question.
You can.
Is it a code enforcement officer, an additional code enforcement officer, or a code enforcement assistant?
It's an assistant code enforcement.
So, we'll have to.
An assistant code enforcement officer, I believe, would be the-
It's not a code enforcement officer, per se, it's an assistant code enforcement officer?
Well, the powers that the assistant code enforcement officer will have will be the same as a regular code enforcement officer, but that person will work as an assistant to Garth. In terms of their job responsibilities, pretty similar down the line.
Yeah, in the last budget season, Garth came to the council and specifically asked for help, because he was overworked, he was burnt out, and he was looking to retire within the next one to two years. And we weren't able to provide that. So, I think this is a great way to remedy the need of the city in the code enforcement officer. So, I'm really glad that this agreement was made. And I know in talking with Ann, I don't know if you're gonna speak tonight, Ann, but I was, it made me feel better to know that you were happy and content, can you use the word, for a part-time position? And I just wanted to double check, and so I'm glad that you guys were able to talk and have that go forward.
Right. Mike, do we need two votes? Do we need to vote first on the change?
You vote on the amendment first, and then you move it as amended.
Okay, Heather, you had a second on the amendment?
No.
Could I get a second? Okay. All in favor?
Of the amendment.
Of the amendment?
Yeah.
All opposed?
Okay, now we have to, a motion as amended.
It's approved.
Second. All in favor?
Second.
Next, ordinance 232015.
An ordinance providing for amendment of personnel ordinance, be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Waterville, acting as municipal officers as follows: That section five of the personnel ordinance be amended as shown on the attached regarding the proposed change in the city's health insurance coverage.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
We'll take final reading by title only.
Second.
Vote on that.
All those in favor?
Sorry.
Second.
An ordinance providing for amendment of personnel ordinance.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
This one requires a vote. Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counselor Mayhew.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Dushay.
Yes.
The vote is five in favor and zero opposed.
New business. Resolution 252015.
A resolution providing for poverty abatement number one dash 2015, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Waterville, acting as municipal officers as follows: That the City Council approves tax abatement request number 01-2015 for unpaid taxes, interest, and lien charges for the 2013 tax year in the amount of $928.96.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Next, ordinance 262015.
An ordinance providing for repeal of ordinance 12-1989, and acceptance of the site plan review and subdivision ordinance, be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Waterville, acting as municipal officers as follows: That ordinance 12-1989 is repealed, and that an ordinance titled Site Plan Review and Subdivision Ordinance, a copy of which is available on the city webpage at www.waterville-me.gov, is adopted, and further, that the city solicitor is authorized to prepare in summary form a publication notice of the ordinance.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Mike, can you, can you give us a brief explanation for why we're going with?
Ann, could you help me give a brief explanation? Thanks.
This is your moment. The zoning ordinance, pardon me, the subdivision site plan new ordinance has needed to be amended for years, and so basically, we were updating and editing. But while we were doing this, decided to make a change to the zoning ordinance to be a little bit more development-friendly in regard to the requirement to hook into a waterline. That's been an issue in three developments that I can think of, the cost of hooking into the waterline. The requirement currently is that if a development is within 1,500 feet, the developer has to hook in at his expense. And the planning board has the authority to waive that standard in the subdivision site plan review ordinance, but they do not have the authority to waive it in the zoning ordinance. So, what the planning board wanted to recommend to you is that you leave the language in the subdivision ordinance, and allow the planning board to waive it on a case-by-case basis. So, if the fire chief says, for example, this project needs fire hydrants, then the developer, then the planning board will simply believe it, and its findings of fact determine that the project needed to hook into the Waterville line.
Okay.
Good, thank you. So, I actually described the next ordinance as well. And Bill Lee is gonna take a look at the subdivision site plan with the ordinance and see if he has any problems, but he's not gotten back to any of that.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor, pass. Opposed? Ordinance 272015.
An ordinance providing for amendment to zoning Article IV, be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Waterville, acting as municipal officers as follows: That Article IV Performance Standards of the zoning ordinance be and hereby is amended as follows: 4.3 Performance Standards, 4.3.15 Hydrogeologic Assessment of Groundwater Impacts. That wasn't easy. And we're striking out 4.3.15.E. If the development is within 1,500 feet of a public waterline, the development must connect to the line at the developer's expense.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Passed. Mike?
Yes, two items on the manager's report, and Patty, our city clerk, will do the first one.
I believe we had provided freedom of access, training materials to the newly elected officials, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I've yet to get any of the certificates back, so if you still need it, I could give you additional. Do you still need it?
I was always late with my homework, too.
And that training is required by state statutes, so I'm just following up on that. You really just have to review the state's website under Maine.gov, one of the frequently asked questions that are free of information. And you just review the website, fill out the certificate, and get it back to me. And I won't, I won't do any more.
Do we have to do that, all of them, do it annually?
The newly elected officials do it when they're reelected, when they're elected or reelected.
When they're elected or reelected.
Yep.
All right.
Oh, what a group.
Item two is a presentation from the transportation team of the State Mid-Maine Coalition, and Jever, you gonna lead it off?
Yes, I am.
All right. And also, can you give it to the constable?
Yeah. Yeah, good evening. My name's Jim Wood.
I've been hitting a few of these, if they're the right ones.
Yeah. My name's Jim Wood. I'm the transportation director for KB Cap, and also the chair of the Sustain Mid-Maine Transportation Committee, which during the past year has kind of joined initiatives with the active community environment team, which is looking at ways to keep people in our communities active and healthy. And with the transportation committee, we're just looking at ways that we can look at sustainable activities within our communities, and keep people independent and mobile. It's grown into a pretty broad group, with a significant number of different people representing-
Enter.
Okay. The folks tonight, as you can see, we have people from a number of different disciplines here. We have Scott Workman from Kennebec West Monoski Trails, Jennifer Olson from Waterville Main Street. I'll do a brief update on our public transit services. We have G. Reed, who's a teacher at Albertus Hall School, Fran Mullin from Healthy Northern Kennebec, Laura Howell from Inland Hospital, and Joe Greenwood from KICA. And against the law, we're gonna try to keep this, you know, brief, but we've had a lot of really interesting topics that we've been, that we've been working on over the past couple of years. And we wanted to bring it to the council, because we think there are a lot of things that we've been doing that are, that would be of interest to the council, and hopefully we'll give you some ideas at the end of this, as to, you know, what you might be able to do to help move these initiatives forward. And I'm gonna start off tonight, I'll turn this over to Scott Workman, talk about Complete Streets.
Thank you.
May I, councilors, thank you very much for having us. Here to talk about complete streets. Uh, I don't know if anybody knows what that is, but we're going to go through it really quickly here. Okay, so what are complete streets? Um, you know, a lot of times we design things, I worked for the DOT for a year, and, uh, went back, straight back to IT, which was healthier for me. But, uh, it's streets for everyone, pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists, transit users, all ages, all abilities. Um, they require planning and design for the entire right-of-way and to enable safe access for everybody. Um, I threw this slide in because, sign of the times. One of those is a location that you can probably recognize. It's in front of, uh, the, uh, oh, Upper Main Street. Uh, I always take pictures of people walking on the side of the street. This is kind of a failure of engineering, if you will. Um, this is a picture of some old folks and, or seniors, sorry. Which, which Waterville has quite a few, and we just, we just, we just, sorry, that's great. We've just built a new facility right downtown, and it's going to require a lot of thought, you know, and how these people are going to get around, because a lot of them do not drive. They take, they rely on transit, they rely on their feet, and, uh, they rely on taxi cabs instead of driving their own vehicles. Um, a couple of these things on the bottom are what I would call market failures. Uh, there is a market for signs like "Drive Like Your Kids Live Here" and the slow turtle. There ought not to be a market for those things. We should rectify that at the engineering level, not with signs that may or may not work. So why complete streets? Aging population, which we already talked about. Our children's safety is important. Um, how many parents we have on the council here? All right, quite a few. Um, safe streets attract residents, um, which in turn boosts property values. Um, complete streets create a business-friendly downtown environment. How many people like to go to a nice city and wander around downtown? You know, take the day, have lunch, sit at the side of a cafe, and watch everybody go by. Plus, according to the last ACS Census numbers, eleven percent of people in Waterville walk to work. So it's a primary mode choice. Um, who's adopted a complete streets policy? Um, so far Portland in 2011, Lewis and Auburn in 2013, which was nationally recognized, uh, complete streets policy. Five hundred other cities in the U.S. before 2012. And the Maine DOT has adopted one in 2014. You may ask, does that apply to all the roads in the state of Maine? No, it does not. It applies to state aid and state-funded roadways. So, also, you might recognize, or you may recognize the situation. This is a man walking a dog on the left-hand side under the text, and he's walking on what we call a goat trail. Um, it's a trail that's been etched into the grass where people tend to walk because they need to get somewhere. Um, and then there's what we would call a complete street configuration, where there's an actual sidewalk, uh, and it looks like a nice, safe roadway. So good design adds value and safety. Uh, this is a downtown, um, area. And you'll notice it's got something called a bump-out here, which actually kind of narrows the traffic way, which in turn makes people drive slower. Um, those are just some key features of, you know, what the complete streets policy would look like when applied to the context of a downtown. So what about design impacts safety? That's one of the big questions. Good design impacts vehicle speed. Uh, this is a chart that's commonly used in, uh, the planning and engineering field. Vehicle impact speed and pedestrian injury severity. Uh, forty, forty miles per hour, it's about ninety percent likelihood that somebody's going to die from an accident. At twenty miles per hour, it's about ten. So, you know, and a lot of this is vehicle speed is corollary to accident severity, and design impacts vehicle speed, so. Here's another treatment that, uh, here's another treatment that is narrower streets or road diet. Road diet, this road diet is a safer street, the right picture, for everybody who's going to use it. It's got a sidewalk, it's got a bike lane, it's got a center turn lane that's all defined. Um, and capacity is typically not reduced whenever you do something like a road diet. Um, it actually makes traffic sometimes flow a little bit smoother because you've got the center turn lane instead of blocking traffic for left-hand turn traffic. Um, often narrower streets are cheaper to maintain, uh, less paving, less plowing. The cost is whenever you try to get there, you know, from doing a reconstruction effort instead of, you know, you've got to actually narrow that, and you've got to tear up the, you know, the curving and all that. Even speeds on narrow streets allow for consistent capacity. Um, storing snow on the esplanade, there's a lot of snow storage on the side of this, uh, street, on the right-hand side. Um, and one of the things I always like to say is there's something called a strode. It's a street-road hybrid. We have a few in town. We have one at Upper KMD. Um, it's a street that's not really a, you know, neighborhood street. It's not really a road. We try to limit the speed, but because it's highway geometry, people tend to drive really fast. It's not a safe place to be. And a lot of times it doesn't, uh, do the job it's intended to do, which is support a productive environment. Um, here's a, uh, here's kind of a picture of the Upper KMD, or, I'm sorry, Upper Main Street area. The, the yellow triangles, uh, the yellow arrows are all what we would call more goat paths. Uh, there's no sidewalk heading up to that area, but people are still walking there. So it's kind of a, uh, a missed opportunity. And sad news, more people are dying, uh, as pedestrians. Um, and, yeah, and the share of the traffic deaths that were pedestrians is also increasing.
Do you have any information with regards to that here in Waterville over the last fifty, twenty years?
You know, whenever I was at the DOT, I went through and, uh, I picked out some data that was Waterville's crash, uh, data for pedestrian and bicycles. And, uh, you know, Waterville's not in terrible shape, um, but there are. And we had two big, major bicycle accidents, uh, this year. Um, and I think that those were probably off, I think one of those was somebody riding on the wrong side of the road. So we do have our share, but it's not as bad as I would have thought. So I'd have to go through the data again. That was 2011 data. So I don't have anything new. Um, and you can work with us, uh, the Active Community Environment Team and the, uh, Sustainability Maine Transportation Committee to develop a policy. We'd like to see one developed here for the city. Um, it just basically irons out, you know, gives us a framework for whenever we design roadways, make them available for everybody, and get people to the places they need to go.
Jim Olson?
Nice work. Good job. Uh, so I'm here to talk about the commercial core. I'm Jennifer Olson from Waterville Main Street. And what we do is we deal in the shared space of downtown. So, um, one of the points of the, the work we do is called, uh, design, and it's all of the shared space. If you think about the downtown as the living room of a community, um, how do we present ourselves to guests and visitors and to be a public place for everyone to want to hang out? We, we also deal in the commercial core, so the density of infrastructure that is more, um, more dense than it is elsewhere in the city. And so on the right-hand side, you can see the, um, the slide, actually that Scott prepared for me, and I, I love this slide because it's an aerial view of Waterville, and it's kind of a heat map. So if you think about the red areas, are those places where tax revenue per acre is the highest? So you can see, um, the, the big, the big X on the right-hand side, that's downtown. And so when we think about our bang for our buck, and where do we want to spend our money in places where there are the most people and the most efficiency, downtown is the spot to do so. Sometimes, community members take it into their own hands to, to design something called tactical urbanism. And that's when they make an intervention that's intended to be temporary because they think that there's an issue that needs to be solved, and so the community decides to solve it themselves. So if you recall, there was a, um, creative crosswalk that was painted a couple of years ago just in time for MIF. And we, we, we did this to gauge the community's reaction and to see if in fact this would have an impact on driving behaviors. And it led to, actually, a lasting improvement that the city was able to demonstrate, that yes, in fact, the community did like it, and yes, in fact, it would warrant a, a better, um, situation for pedestrians. And so this flashing beacon is now on the corner. If you recall, where Saylati and Appleton Street and that, uh, and Main Street intersect, that's where that happens. So what we're trying to do is use our streets for more than just cars. So if you think about the farmer's market, if you think about the Parade of Lights, which are two programs that Waterville Main Street has, and when we think about the beautiful Head of Falls potential and the Two-Cent Bridge, it's all meant to link communities to each other, you know, community members to each other. And so that's why it's important to the work that I do. And the enhanced experience of the pedestrian also leads to someone who's going to buy something because nobody buys things from their car. Well, I mean, they do sometimes when they, you know, drive through, but that's a limited experience. So to be, to be a, a purchaser of maximum consumption, if you will, from the business side of things, you've got to get out of your car to do so. So next up on our list, the Hydra. I just, I just made that nickname for that because, you know, it's Waterville, right? The Hydra, like, doesn't it sound like sinister and like, ooh? So, the Hydra, so here's this intersection, which is, everybody know where this is? Everybody? So it's Main Street, and it's Spring Street, and it's Bridge Street, and it's Water Street, and some other streets in between that don't have names, but we just looked through them. So this, this configuration made a lot of sense when the mills were running, before Interstate ninety-five, and before Carter Memorial, where people didn't have a way to go from Winslow, um, south, north and south safely, and east and west. So this, this made a lot of sense once, but right now it's kind of an impediment to what we want to have happen in our downtown development, particularly with the Hathaway Creative Center. So you'll be seeing more about this, but it's, it's something that I want you to have on your radar screens that it, it needs to be better so human beings can get around better. Thanks.
Yeah, back Jim Wood from KB Cap. I want to give you an update on what's going on with our public transit system. Uh, back in 2011, we did a significant upgrade on our, our public transit services throughout the whole Augusta-Waterville corridor, and we have actually added, uh, services in Lower Somerset County, too. We got a bunch of brand-new buses, you know, with a lot of very new technology in them, and redesigned our system schedules. And this is our, our bus schedule, particularly with the map of what's going on in the Waterville area. And we have a, one bus that kind of runs a figure-eight loop through the, uh, through the Waterville area. And, uh, we also have commuter routes that are running between Waterville and Augusta now, as well as enhanced services, uh, within Augusta. Um, we hired a consultant to come in and do, uh, do an assessment of the whole corridor, and we now have, uh, actually a long-range plan that not only covers what the immediate needs of the future football transit are, but what it could be going forward.
How's the ridership, Jim?
Right there. Since 2011, our ridership, since the redesign of the system, our ridership has skyrocketed. Uh, we went under the previous system, which we called KB Transit. Uh, we had a real good year, we thought, in 2011, when we did about forty-four thousand rides. Uh, during this past year, our ridership has escalated to over eighty-two thousand four hundred rides. We're on track to get close to a hundred thousand rides this year. Um, and we're actually running into some capacity issues on our buses now, where we sometimes have more people than we have seats available, you know? And so, uh, it's working. You know, we still have a long way to go with this. And I mean, there's still a lot of things that we could do to, to improve access in the city. And, um, this is our long-range plan for Waterville. I mean, this would take some extra support and some extra things, but it would, it would provide service in areas of the city, such as Colby College and, and the middle of the city that aren't currently being served efficiently. Provide more frequent service in other parts of the city. And, and what we found particularly in Augusta, where we were able to put some of our routes on half-hour headways, other runs are on hour headways, so the bus, you know, the people wouldn't have to wait any more than an hour for a bus, in some cases it's a half an hour, that when you build those systems, people use them and, and use them often. Um, so, you know, this kind of presents more of a longer-range, uh, plan of what we could do here in Waterville and to provide greater access for our people and, and make our community sustainable. And, and, you know, Waterville could be a community where you can come and live very comfortably here without having to own an automobile.
I think one of the things that you and I talked about at, um, the Saturday Sustainability Maine, uh, session is the fact that, um, I've worked with you for how many years on this?
A long time, yeah.
But we've also been doing it in Somerset. And what is unique in Somerset that needs to happen here is have your, your bus stops for people to know where the locations are.
Right.
And we don't have to spend any money in Waterville recreating because they've already done it in Somerset County. And I think I've said that in your direction, Mike, more than once. But, um, that's a focus. And the other, when we start looking at buses, they cost approximately a hundred and ninety, eighty thousand dollars. But ninety percent of that, if we're aggressive and really push, we can find various types of funding.
Right.
For that.
Yeah, federal funding, state-funded funding.
The changes that are going on with Colby and the reinvestment, the time is right for us to be thinking about having that greater focus and greater use of bus traffic in and around town so that we're not having to send it. We've got one that can go in the direction of Somerset, one can go in the direction of Augusta, but a lot more going on here.
Thank you, yeah.
It's okay. It's, it's one of those areas you and I always talk about. It's like, it's time.
And, yeah, we were, you know, with the Somerset Transit Committee, we were able to work with, uh, Technical College in Bangor, where the students actually designed and built, uh, bus shelters for us, and we, we.
Did a beautiful job with it.
Yeah, they did a nice job with it. You know, we do have some similar ideas here from Waterville, which, I was going to bring a, a picture of that, which I didn't elect you to do. But why is public transit important? Um, I mean, we have an aging population in the state of Maine, and we want people to remain vital and active in our communities. And, but a lot of people reach a stage where they shouldn't be operating a car anymore. And we want for that.
In another five years, I probably should not be running a car. And yes, I will need to be able to get from my home to wherever I need to get.
And we want people to be able to, you know, stay in, stay active. We want, uh, quality access to healthcare. You know, people need to be able to get, uh, timely access to healthcare. We want people to get access to higher education. We've got a lot of young people in our society that I'm afraid they, you know, they want to go to college, they might have resources to go out, they just don't have a way to get there. And, and I think we really want, we've worked in partnership with the University of Maine at Augusta. They provide some funding for us, and, and our ridership to UMA has, uh, grown steadily. And, you know, we're hoping to be able to establish those links with Colby College and, and Thomas College. A significant number of our ridership now are people in our community that have a variety of disabilities. And this really is their community access. You know, our buses are all, all accessible, and we have a, I was going to think, last year we did, uh, about eighteen thousand, in terms of system-wide, we did about eighteen thousand boardings for people with disabilities. And by, by that definition, we had to deploy the wheelchair ramp for, for somebody to, to access the vehicle. Uh, commuter access, you know, what we've seen is in working in conjunction with a hospital down there, we have, we have commuter routes that, uh, that are growing steadily. And again, we're reaching some capacity on some of our commuter routes now. But we've also thought as, as a business development initiative, we want small businesses to grow in our communities, but we also want those small businesses, they can't always afford to pay high wages or something, but we want them to have access to a quality workforce. And by ensuring that we have safe and reliable, uh, dependable transportation for commuters, you know, we could help that. Again, that, uh, goes to the business support. Um, I know for some of our merchants in the cities, you know, quite often we have a lot of our parking spaces that are being taken up by employees of, uh, of the businesses, where quite often those, those parking spaces might be better used if we save those for consumers and, and had commuters, you know, the commuter access for bus service for, for people to, to work in those. It reduces vehicle pollutants, it's, uh, better for our environment. And, uh, support for veterans, you know, we're seeing an increased need for, uh, veterans who want to get access to the Veterans Administration Hospital in Togas and, you know, facilities, too. So, but it's all good reasons to, to help promote our, our public transit initiatives. And we want to have affordable transportation options for anyone who needs it or wants it. Or a lot of people now, as, you know, we'll hear a little bit later on, a lot of people want to relocate to communities where they don't have to bear the burden of owning and operating a car. You know, with, uh, you know, by the time you make the, the car payments and insurance payments and maintenance costs and fuel costs and so on, it gets really expensive. And some people want to locate to communities where they don't have to do that.
Does it, uh, does it cost money to ride this?
Yes.
Or do they get a bus card, or what is it?
Well, our standard fares are a dollar in town, a dollar and a quarter for traveling between two communities, and three dollars from here to Augusta. So it's pretty affordable, you know? And we do have monthly bus passes are available, that, that's a forty-dollar bus pass for local access and eighty dollars for intercity access.
Something that I, when I was working for the Elfon You Center, uh, one of the buses would come at the end of the day.
Yeah.
Get the children, bring them home.
Yeah, we're still doing that.
Yes, and the driver was great, Christie.
Yeah, yeah, he's a pretty.
He would always make sure the kids got to where they needed to go.
Yeah, and I think, geez, last year we did, uh, over three thousand rides from the Elfon You Center. Mostly were focused around the north and the south ends, but it gives kids a lot of opportunities to deal with.
Excuse me, Jim. Um, excuse, excuse me. Um, it's not, uh, based on income eligibility right now. It's for everyone to run.
General public. Yeah, anybody, it's available to anybody, the eligibility is a dollar bill, you know? And that gets you on the bus.
You have to drive to get to the bus stop.
And I think that's.
Is this on the website, the Sustained Mid-Maine website? If people want more information?
Well, if you want more information about our particular service, you can either go to www.kbcap.org or www.kenbexexplore.com, or .com, I should say.
It is on the city website. The bus schedule is on the city's website.
That's fine, okay.
Thank you. Turn this over to Gee Reed, who's a teacher at Albertus House. Oh, how about taking to school?
Thanks, Jim. Yep, they talked a little bit about the elders. I'm going to talk a little bit about our youngers. First of all, show of hands, how many people walk to school at some point in their educational career? Look at that, look at that. In this map, this map shows an area around the Hall School. There are 59 families that live in this circle. And only about four kids from those families walk to school. We'd like to change that. We know that kids like to walk to school. We have walking events where they get dropped off at the high school and walk with adults to our school. They enjoy doing that. Uh-oh. Enter, I can do that. These events are really popular. Over half of our school population walk on these events, even in the rain. So they love to walk. They will walk if they have the opportunity. What's holding them back? Our school students are only nine through 11 years old. And parents don't feel safe sending their nine to 11-year-olds out the door to walk to school. We want to change that. We have a connection with Safe Routes to School and national and international organization that helps communities organize and train adults who will help walk with students every day. And we'll keep up that. Oh, yeah, these are some fun photos. These are the events that we've held. We get our physical education teacher out. Richard Viggo is our school transportation person. So we have volunteers that come out for these single-day events. The kids get to school ready to learn, ready to chat, ready to be interactive. They don't get that way every day. So lots of kids being dropped off by bus even though they live within a mile of school. So this group is helping us change that. And we hope to keep those connections with Safe Routes to School and hopefully get some funding through them to help us organize more adults to come out. We'll definitely let you know the, the date of our next one coming up. It'll be in May. And I'll get the word out to you guys if you'd like to help be involved in that.
Can I just add one thing, Gee?
Please.
Connected Gee with our city accessor who was able to take a look at the city maps and so forth and look at all the streets and work with her to design the routes and to make it as safe as possible. So, good connection between the city and the Hall School at this point with Safe Routes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gee. My name is Fran Mullin. I'm the director of Health in Northern Kennebec, which is the Public Health Program in Health and Partnership in the greater Waterville area. And I just wanted to say a few things about walking and biking being healthy activities. So not only are they just good for your personal health, they're good for community health. People who live in walkable neighborhoods, oh, like this one around St. Louis, get more exercise than people who don't. And cities with the highest level of biking and walking have the lowest rates of obesity, diabetes, and high blood pressure. So when we're looking at having prevention programs, we're looking at things that are going to help people have healthier lives, walking and biking are kind of an obvious choice. In fact, the US Center for Disease Control and Prevention recommends adoption of this complete streets as a strategy to prevent obesity. We have a young person here. Her name is Laura. And she's going to give her perspective.
Hello, my name's Laura Howell, and I work at Elland Hospital. I'm also a member of the ACE team and a Waterville resident. So I recently moved to Waterville. I live on Silver Street. And when looking for an apartment, my two biggest factors were, can I walk around my neighborhood and can I access public transit? I recently graduated from college, so I have a lot of student loans. And I don't want to spend my entire paycheck on gas. So I wanted to offset that with public transit. And being able to walk to the farmer's market, the grocery store, to, I can actually walk to work. I can walk to my doctor's office. And I can just walk to facilities and anywhere around town. So those were my two biggest factors when looking for an apartment. And I found one, actually. So walkability and being able to access public transit is really important for finding a younger workforce and attracting a younger population to town as well as making the availability of public transit for an older generation, too. We want to attract a younger generation as well. And thank you.
My name's Joel Breamer from KB Cap. And I just want to kind of wrap this up by, you've heard a lot of information. I just want to kind of give a very quick thing about what can Waterville and you guys as a council actually do to kind of work with some of these concepts and ideas. Well, the first one would be, is actually just kind of take in what we've been saying and just consider it. Every time you're making decisions, try and incorporate wherever you can some of the ideas that we've been talking about. Look at, the first easy thing to do that Scott talked about is look at adopting a local complete streets policy. Ask the planning board, ask the wonderful town planner, and to have a look at adopting those as, as part of the terms regulations so that local roads in Waterville are included to the same standards as the state of Maine, now that they've adopted their complete streets. Similarly, with, look at the policies, look at the ordinances, look at any kind of amendments that you could put in there that would help promote and kind of invest in all these ideas that we're talking about that will help make Waterville a better community to live, work, play, be healthier, and everything that we've already talked about. And where possible, I know budgets are always tough, but provide financial support for things. Especially, specifically look at providing support for transit services. The city could help work with Jim, looking for sources of revenue through grants and other things. And perhaps even look at promoting the bus services more and looking at places where the town owns land where they could possibly look at putting a significant fixed bus shelter, probably down on the Concourse somewhere, where there's a bit of, a small, you'd only need a small amount of land where you could, the town would allow the structure to go to help the service as a kind of a hub right there in the middle of downtown. And otherwise, Safe Routes to School. Support that, promote that. Kind of talk about the events, encourage volunteering.